I have to be official for Bob. I'm waiting. Not a second too soon. Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Colavita, will you take the role, please?
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Genovasi.
Here.
Ms. Grillo.
Present.
Ms. Lindthorst.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Swicki.
Here.
We have a quorum?
Thank you very much. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 5th, 2022. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Phios. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. This meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 19, Verizon Phios Channel 32, and the school district website www.hvrsd.org. Would you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will request a motion that the Board approve the following minutes, I'm sorry, approve the minutes from the following meetings. The regular enclosed minutes on October 17th, 2022.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Good evening, Angela, we will ask you to present your report at this time, please.
Thank you. Good evening, I hope that everyone has been doing well. We have a couple of exciting events coming up this week at the high school. This Wednesday, the senior girls will face off the junior girls in a flag football game at 4:00 PM on the turf. All proceeds will be going towards the Covenant House, a nonprofit organization for combating youth homelessness. The winner of the game will earn points for the black and gold cup. Adding on to the black and gold cup, the school is collecting donations. The freshmen and juniors are in charge of collecting dog food for the gold team while sophomores and seniors are donating cat food for the black team. This Friday, November 18th, and Saturday, November 19th, HVCHS will be presenting the fall play, The Diary of Anne Frank, at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. Tickets are $10 for students and seniors and $15 for adults. All tickets must be purchased ahead of time by visiting showtickets4you.com and searching for Hopewell. Our fall sports and marching black and gold had a great season this year, and especially our football team, who had an undefeated regular season. We are proud of all of our fall athletes and members. As we transition to the winter sports, we look forward to seeing the season's games and matches. As I mentioned in past meetings, the Student Administrator Action Committee and Student Council plans on having office hours where students may come in and express their ideas or any concerns. More information will be going out to the students, and we truly encourage everyone to reach out to any of the Student Council officers with any questions or feedback that would benefit our school. Finally, the Student Council has planned a Student Appreciation Day for the high schoolers. We wanted to thank our students and express our care for their needs. We decided that one of the ways that we could show appreciation to the students is by purchasing Turquen's apple cider donuts, where students may pick one up at the end of the half day this Friday. Donuts will be given out at two exits, one near the bus loop and one near the pack. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Angela. So I have to ask, do you favor one grade versus the other in the flag football game?
Yes, I do.
I would imagine that's the junior.
I also have to ask, do you favor the donuts with the sugar or without?
With the sugar.
Do we have any other questions from Board members for Angela? Seeing none, we'll say thank you very much for your report, we appreciate it. Good luck, juniors and seniors. I will provide a brief report, I just wanted to offer my congratulations to the newest elected members of our Board, Dr. Mike Wilson and Mr. Mark Peters. I don't believe either of them are in attendance tonight, but we still want to congratulate them, and we look forward to welcoming them to the Board in January officially. With regard to the write-in candidate, we have no report on that yet from the county offices, we're hoping to hear something soon in that regard. And I also wanted to remind members that some information was sent out this week regarding the Board's self-evaluation. Please make sure if you didn't see that in the green notes that you take a look for that and fill that out as soon as you possibly can, so we can tally those results and use those to inform our decision-making as we move forward. I will now ask Dr. Treese to provide her report.
Well, do you want me to table this till after the Merit Scholar stuff?
Yeah.
Sure. Let's do a Merit Scholar. So we're going to table my report right until after the Merit Scholar, so if we can have Principal Riley come up and introduce all of these distinguished guests we have here today?
Good evening, thank you so much for having us here tonight. The National Merit Scholar Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the PSAT, a test which serves as an initial screen of 1.6 million entrants every year. Of the 1.6 million entrants, roughly 50,000 students with the highest PSAT selection index qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. About 34,000 of the 50,000 receive letters of commendation in recognition of their outstanding academic promise. Commended students are named on the basis of a nationally-applied selection index score that varies from year to year. This year, we have 14 commended scholars at HVCHS. About 16,000 students, or about one-third of the 50,000, are notified that they have qualified as semifinalists. To ensure that academically talented young people from all over the United States are included in this talent pool, semifinalists are designated on a state representational basis. They are the highest-scoring entrance in each state, and this year we have one National Merit semifinalist here at HVCHS. So, tonight, out of the 1.6 million entrants across the country, we are recognizing the students who scored in the top 3% and have earned the designation of commended scholar or semifinalist. The individuals we're recognizing tonight are scholars of merit in many senses. From an academic perspective, they are absolutely brilliant. But beyond that, they are award-winning artists, varsity athletes, community activists, talented musicians, and leaders in our school. It is my pleasure to introduce to you 15 incredible young men and women from the class of 2023. Rather than me introduce them as I have in previous years and they get a second of FaceTime, this year we decided that they are going to introduce themselves and provide one quick fun fact so you can get to know a little bit more about them as people because they are more than just a PSAT score. So, love it. We're going to start with our National Merit semifinalist, and then we will continue on with our commended scholars.
Hi, my name is Andrew Chen, and a fun fact about me is that I have a black belt in taekwondo.
Hello, my name is James Lee, and I like to draw in my free time.
Hi, I'm Satya Kumari Purigob, and when I'm late to class, I run in the hallways.
Hi, my name is Pavel Sverdlav, and I've never broken a bone in my life.
Hello, my name is Ray Linzway, and I really like art.
Hi, my name is Elise Meng, and I'm a member of the Hopewell Valley Girls tennis team.
Hello, I'm Armand Desai, and I play volleyball.
Hi, I'm Tom Hux, and I was born in England.
Hi, I'm Brad Deener, and my favorite food is waffles.
Hi, I'm Katie Lutisus, and I'm on the basketball team.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Kaczynski, and people say I dress like an English teacher.
Hi, I'm Samia Sayad, and my favorite color is purple.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Walrath, and one of my favorite pastimes is biking.
Hello, I'm Stephen Kim, and I play the flute.
All right, I think that was everyone much better than previous years, right? They are a great group of students, and I'm really proud to present them to you tonight. So, thank you.
So we're just going to take a quick pause so we can take a picture with our distinguished scholars here, and then we'll be right back. Question number three, covering our facilities department. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we need to go back, sorry, sorry.
My report will be brief. As in our last session where we had the head report that we wanted to take some time to walk the community through even though it was on the agenda, I wanted to take some time to talk about CUSAC, which stands for the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. And that is the monitoring system that the New Jersey Department of Ed has for public schools and charter schools, I believe, have to go through some facet of it, to ensure that we are following state and federal guidelines. So I just said this, so we can go on past that. So, school districts are evaluated in five, what they call district performance review areas. They include instruction and programs, which falls mostly under Dr. Plitz's purview, fiscal management, which Mr. Colavita manages, governance, which overlaps across many of the areas of the Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent's purview, operations, again crosses over many departments, including Mr. Quinn's facilities, and then finally personnel, which is Ms. Smith, and she also manages some of the operations piece. There are several indicators, or 14 to 16 in each, to be exact, and students are monitored to see that we're in compliance of these federal and state regulations. So finally, what this process looks like for the district. We engage with the committee in a self-assessment of whether or not we're meeting the mandates. We have to upload evidence that we are doing so for each of the indicators, for each of the five domains, and that committee oversees that, and then we do upload that to the Executive Superintendent's Office by November 15th, which will happen tomorrow after this meeting. School visits are made, where they check and see that our facilities are in compliance of safety and code regulations, and then a meeting is scheduled for the Executive Superintendent and his representatives to come in and audit us in all five of those areas. Then they send us a final score based upon their evaluation and ours, and then they tell us if there's any correction areas. As a district, we usually do very well, this is something that we always pass, we may get one or two corrections that we need to look at, as in any audit, but we are generally proud of the work that we do, and we're validated after the end of our CUSAC monitoring. So we just wanted to make you aware of what this is that's attached to our agenda before we just vote on it this evening. And finally, one more slide. Some upcoming dates, just to give you a heads-up, that parent conferences are now underway this week, then we go into a half-day right before the break over Thanksgiving, schools and offices are closed on the 24th and 25th, and then finally, on the 9th, the week of the, the 9th is the Friday, during that week, the end of the first trimester occurs at the elementary level. Those are all the upcoming dates, and you should have received my superintendent bi-weekly update today, so that is all the news that's fit to print for me right now. So I will go ahead and end my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Treese, do any Board members have questions for Dr. Treese? Mr. Resnick?
I do. And I apologize if I put you guys on the spot.
Sure.
I did not complete a self, my self-evaluation or our, my input into it, because when I was looking at the green notes, it said by Friday, November 18th. And that said, you're submitting it tomorrow.
No, no, that's, that's different.
That's different.
Yes. So you're not delinquent.
You're still in compliance.
Okay.
All good. Any other questions for Dr. Treese? All right, and we will move on now to our budget discussion number three, and we'll ask Mr. Quinn and Mr. Colavita to present on the facilities department, please.
So, I'm Bob Colavita, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Finance. Tom Quinn, the Director of Facilities, is also here to discuss with you this evening our facilities department. The facilities department encompasses three major areas, maintenance, custodial, and grounds, which we'll go into a little bit more in detail, but we also help out around the district, providing assistance and support to the technology department, to our safety, our issues of safety and security as well, and pretty much pitch in wherever we're needed. Our custodians in the buildings are members, like members of the staff, they participate in all aspects of the school day, get involved in all aspects of the school day, so, you know, pretty much the facilities department touches all other departments. So our facilities budget is quite large, it's one of the largest within our district, it's about $6.7 million, that's this year's budget, we're beginning to build next year's budget, but it's about 7% of our total spending. Considering that we have many buildings that are nearing 100 years old, you would expect to have a lot of funds directed toward our facilities. Within the facilities department, we have a facilities director, Mr. Quinn, I mentioned over here, we also have custodial and maintenance supervisors, and a full staff of maintenance, custodial, and grounds personnel. We have a certified plumber on staff, we have a certified electrician, we have certified HVAC technicians also on staff, we have, our groundsmen are, have herbicide licenses, playground inspection licenses, so we are able to do a lot of our own work in-house without having to incur contractor fees. We do use contractors from time to time, but our skilled staff is able to save us money where other districts are having to go outside and contract out for simple services. The facilities budget encompasses, again, as I said, three main areas. The first area that comes under Code Function 261 is what we call required maintenance. This is a state term, and what it means is, is all of those things that are required to keep our buildings open and safe for all to use. It would involve things such as all of our systems, our HVAC systems, plumbing systems, boilers, electrical systems, and all those types of things that are required to keep a facility safe. Custodial is the daily upkeep, would include our cleaning services, our utilities, property and casualty insurance, all come under this particular function. Lastly, our grounds department, and obviously that would be all of the areas surrounding the actual brick and mortar buildings, and they do everything from snow removal to taking care of the landscaping, the grass cutting, lining, and taking care of our athletic fields, staffing our outside events, so we pretty much are involved in all areas of the facility. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom to talk a little bit about the things that his department handles.
So, for instance, in plumbing, we have over 500 toilets, 1,000 sinks, we have one plumber in the district. We also deal with the sewers, pump stations, lift pits, and all of that. HVAC, we have two HVAC technicians who are certified and are able to work on virtually everything in the, has to do with HVAC, all the air conditioning requirements that we'd have to take care of, refrigeration, our geothermal systems, and then we have an electrician that handles all of the electrical power and that stuff.
So just to touch on a few things there, going back to 2000, the vast majority of the district was un-air-conditioned. And over that time, from 2000 when we built Stony Brook, to the 2016 referendum when we finished air conditioning the remainder of the places in this district, we had one HVAC tech in 2000, we have two today, and we probably quadrupled the amount of HVAC equipment. And we're able to keep up and running 90% of the time, there are occasions where, you know, unfortunately, on a hot day, our air conditioning systems go down, just like anywhere else, but we're able to keep all of these systems up and running with these guys.
And by having skilled technicians like that, for instance, at Tollgate, we were able to install eight split-system air conditioning units that cost us about $18,000 in cost plus the, our labor to do it. I had actually gotten estimates that were over $65,000 if we had had outsourced that work.
Okay. So, part of what we wanted to discuss with you tonight, facilities budget is what it is, we've been talking a lot in Finance, Facilities Committee, and with the full Board as well, is like a lot of the projects that we have coming due. We did just complete a $35 million referendum, but if you remember or recall during those early discussions, we really had 60 to 70 million dollars worth of projects at that time, and the Board at that time decided that we weren't going to go out for all of that, we were going to bite off a big chunk, but there's still work to do, and as I mentioned, with facilities aging, the high school was built in the 60s, Bear Tavern in the 50s, the other buildings in the 20s, there is a lot of work, continual maintenance that is required on facilities. So for this coming summer, the 23-24, we're looking at addressing three major areas, we have a fire alarm replacement that's needed to be done at Stony Brook, and you may say, Sony Brook, you know, that's our newest building, but remember, Stony Brook is 20 years old now. So a lot of the critical systems in that building need to start to be looked at, the roofs, the HVAC work, you know, electrical, a lot of that stuff needs to be done, this is the first piece.
And unfortunately, the fire alarm system at Stony Brook is obsolete. The company sold and went out of business, and the parts are no longer made, they have been out of business since 2015. So when you have something go bad, it's very difficult to get parts for it, they only, systems only talk to each other, they won't talk to someone else outside there.
We're also targeting some electrical upgrades at Tollgate, to the electrical panel at Tollgate, and we have a major boiler and chiller replacement that is due at Hopewell. And just to give you an idea of where we are with that, chillers right now are looking at a 36-week, 30, 36 weeks, right?
46 weeks.
46, 46-week lead time on getting those replaced, so we don't know if we're going to have it ready this summer, it may have to be something that's done over the fall.
And we are in the final phases of developing the engineering, with the engineers and the architects on doing that system. The boilers will eliminate the steam in the building, which is very helpful for maintaining the evenness in temperature, but the chiller, we were able to get the current chiller up and running thanks to our HVAC technicians, but it is only running at about half-capacity. And unfortunately, we're going to have to run it like that in the spring and probably again in the fall, because even when we go out to bid, I don't think the chiller will be here in time for those cooling seasons, but the boilers should be.
Looking ahead to the following summer, again, there's boilers that need to be replaced here at the high school, we have some HVAC upgrades at Tollgate, paving has been delayed at Tollgate and patched over the last several years, but needs to be done in a permanent way sometime in the near future, and again, additional HVAC upgrades at Hopewell in a different section of the building that's not serviced by the chiller.
And you'll see, if you pay attention year to year, you see some of these projects, they get pushed back or moved up, and it just depends on what is the most need at that time, and if we think something can, we can stretch it out for another year, because we're always working with that budget number, trying to fit it in and make it work.
Okay. Going forward to third summer, again, some additional HVAC work at Timberland, you can see the number, that's not a typo, it's a $10 million adjustment, it's a major part of the building, and we are getting by right now, but we'd like to be able to be planning for that going down the future, and maybe something that we break into pieces to try to bite off pieces at a time, and there's some, the 400 wing here at Central High School, that I believe is the original to that addition.
It is original to the 1997 edition.
Okay, and again, a lot of folks, till we did this most recent referendum, the 400 wing was the newest part of the building, so again, work needs to be done there. We also have a roofing, it's called a roof survey, we're doing a roof survey, we did a lot of roofs during our referendum back in 2016, but we have another area of roofing that needs to be addressed, and again, there's Stony Brook, it's a 20-year, 20-year roof on that building, and it's getting near the end of its useful life. What we're looking at, and what a roof survey does, is it determines whether or not you have to replace the roof, or you can do some kind of remediation that will extend the useful life of that roof and give it another warranty. You may not have to replace it, you may be able to- You may be able to do a coating or a patch that will extend that out without having to replace it.
And if, if the roof is in good enough shape that you're able to do a coating like that, you can do it for about half the cost and extend the warranty for another 15 years. You just can't let it get to the point where that can't be done.
And these are some of the projects that we have pushed out. They aren't really as critical, things that we'd like to see done over the years, in the coming years. Some bleachers, we do, you may say, we do have bleachers over at the turf field. They are rentals. We actually pay each year to have those bleachers set up over there. There's some stage lighting that's been requested in the pack that wasn't, it was cut out of the original design, and they built that in the 2004 referendum. There's a folding wall in the, I guess, the oldest gym that they would like to have replaced, fire doors, the Bear Tavern storefront, you know, the front of the building. The Timberlane entranceway, Dr. Smith wanted to replace that years ago. It just keeps getting pushed off. It's not a life-safety issue. It's a nice-to-have. We do have a lift at Hopewell Elementary, but we would, in the future, some way, like get a permanent elevator system in there. But again, not necessary at this point. We do have a way to get from top to bottom. And again, lighting. Lighting is a big thing right now with the LED lighting systems. We are looking for ways to do that within our budget. If we were to do everything right now on our own dime, it would be about a $3 million project. We are looking for some grants to help us accomplish that project. The CHS lockers have been an area of consternation for current and past administrations, looking to address that somewhere. We would like to remove the modulators at Bear Tavern someday. Those modulators were constructed more than 25 years ago and were never meant to last this long. Due to the, again, our Facilities Department, we've been able to extend the life of those structures till now.
And we're actually in the process of putting new heating and air conditioning in those. The systems that we're putting in though, we're on a 26-week back order when we purchased them in July, so we're expecting them sometime around Christmas.
Okay. Again, lighting. We talked about interior lighting. We'd also like to address our exterior lighting throughout the district. And, you know, another, another project to be a nice-to-have as electric vehicles become more and more popular, to have charging stations here on-site for folks to use.
Now, this, the next couple of slides are just some pictures of some before and after work of things that we've done. Last year, we talked to you about some of the issues that we were having at Tollgate with the steam system, and you can see the before pictures with a lot of corrosion on them. And if you go to the next slide, there's a new condensate tank and four pumps. The original system only had two, and there should have always been four, one for each boiler. And you can see it cleaned up the boiler room quite a bit. We spent a good deal of money there, but I think we got the system working much better now. This next slide is a picture of some back stairs off the gym at Tollgate, and because they are used quite frequently, it's something that we need to keep on the radar as, to need to be repaired. There's no real landing, and really by code today, there needs to be a landing. This next one are the before and after pictures of the boilers at Bear Tavern. On the left is what was there, and on the right is from the same position that picture was taken. So, you can see the difference in the size of the equipment when you get modern-day things. And then the next one is the same idea over at Timberlane. The next slide is just a picture of some of the boilers here at the high school. There are banks of them, and right now, we have four that are offline because they are leaking. And then this is a picture of the tennis courts that were just redone this past summer. And then the following picture is one of an aerial shot, so you can see all the sidewalks were also completed to give us full ADA compliance when reaching the tennis courts.
So, just to kind of put it in perspective, this shows how we've been able to build up and spend our capital reserve over the past four or five years and things that we've used the money for. The last, this lower right-hand part of the slide kind of summarizes the previous slides and how much money we actually have out there looking at projects. And, you know, you can see we're looking at close to $25,000, $26 million in projects that we need to have addressed. Just a little note there that we do have 800,000 square feet of buildings, and you would expect that there would be projects that you have to complete on those. What we are trying to do is to leverage state funding whenever we can. We did it on the last referendum. We got, it was about 38% contributed by the state towards our debt service each year. There is a round of $350 million that is going up for grabs by the state. The state is putting up what's called a ROD grant, Regular Operating School District Grants, that can also pay us up to 38% for projects. We have a number of the projects that you saw tonight in queue for that. When they actually announce it, we expect them to announce the release of the funding in January, and when we have that, we'll be submitting as many projects as we can get submitted to get in line for 40% funding back. So, we will continue to, I don't want to say limp along, but we're going to see, to try to do as much as we can with what we have, try to get state funding when we can, and do the best to get, to attack these projects. There may be a time in the future where we may need to do another referendum. It's just, it's, it's part of doing business. We don't want to do one right now, and we will continue to try to fix things and repair things. But we wanted to give you an idea of what actually goes on, the things that Tom is dealing with, and just hope to give you a better idea of the Facilities Department. And with that, are there any questions for either Tom or me?
Board members, any questions?
Bob, Tom, this is Adam. I was just going to comment, like, one, you brought up the discussion about potentially looking at grants and other sources of funding, state funding, things like that. So, I was going to ask about that, but I'm glad you did. And the other thing I'd say is just for the other board members, for those of us on Facilities, the discussion we had about looking at that type of funding, developing prioritizations of, you know, what we attack in a given year, and just conversations about, you know, how we should approach it, looking at, you know, funding it on a year-to-year basis from our capital projects versus discussions about referenda and such. Those are the conversations we have in Finance and Facilities, and Bob and Tom have done a very good job, you know, giving us the, you know, what's on the radar, what's out there, keeping us informed in terms of the options that they're looking at. So, thank you very much, Bob. Thank you, Tom.
No, thank you, Adam.
Any other questions from board members?
Alex?
I've got a bunch. So, the first one, Bob, under the withdrawals on that chart for '22, '23, there's nothing there. Is that because we just don't know yet?
No, we're not doing, we're not making withdrawal this year.
We're not. We're actually not making withdrawals. Okay.
What is missing, now that you ask, is under here, under '21, '22, there's no deposit yet. And that deposit is finalized when we finalize our audit, and we have not finalized our audit yet. But we are also discussing in Finance, Facilities, what, if any, deposit we will make. We may decide that instead of making a deposit, we will appropriate it directly into the budget this year. We may decide to make a deposit into capital reserve at budget time, or we may make, decide to make one at the end of the audit. That is a discussion we probably will have with the Finance, Facilities Committee after the audit's finalized, and then we'll bring it to the full board for a final decision.
Couple of comments on things, and most of them in the spirit of the, I forget what it's officially called, but this sustainability plan that we plan to work on. Since we're looking at roofing and what we can do with it, if we start looking at the estimates for replacing the roof, I would be interested in seeing estimates for doing solar at the same time, either solar tiles or installed solar systems, right? Not to say that we ought to do it, because I know that's a significant cost, but I think we should at least know what that cost is. Likewise, you were talking a lot about lighting replacement. Is it incandescent for LEDs? And if it is, it would be good to understand what savings?
Usually, it's fluorescent LED.
It's fluorescent. So, if there are savings on the energy costs from that, that would be good to know. And then the last one is the charging stations. I was going to ask if we do install them, are they going to be paid, or are they going to be free?
We haven't even gotten that far yet.
Okay. But that's something to discuss.
Right. I would, I would think that you'd probably have to do some kind of a charge for it. As far as LEDs go, I mean, LEDs save money from the get-go. The issue we found with LEDs is while the bulbs last, they say, almost forever, it's the, the drivers that die. And that's something that you have to watch out for when you install LEDs. They don't even replace the LEDs anymore. They replace the entire driver at the same time. So, we're looking at programs, there's a program called Direct Install, and we're looking into that program and seeing there are rebates that come along with doing it yourself. We just haven't had the time to have our guys install lights, because we've been chasing our tails with HVAC work. The cost savings comes if you can actually do the installations yourself rather than having a company do it. But it's a project that we, it's on our radar to kind of, to start the relamping process of the rest of it.
Yeah. One of the things I'm going for here is we're presumably start looking at the sustainability plan. I think it's going to be pretty good to the extent that we can to understand the various cost savings and costs for doing things in a more sustainable way. So, I don't want to create a lot of extra work, and if it creates a lot of extra work, we shouldn't do it, but if there's an easy way to even just estimate what the costs are.
Yeah, I mean, architects and engineers can do that. What we've found in the past with roofing, and we looked at, years ago, we looked at white roofs.
Yep.
If you have, you know, they have these reflective coatings on it, and what we found was that the savings on the roof, the installation costs far exceed, at that time, it wasn't worth installing the coating on it. It drove the price, you know, to be sustainable, you've got to put more money out than you might have to do it, and the savings just isn't there. But, you know, the coatings have come a long way in the 10 years or so where we first looked at it. Same thing with solar. I don't think at this point the incentives to install solar on our own makes sense right now. The incentives aren't there for the local school districts, but what we could do is what we did with the solar lot here at the high school, is we sell our space for others to put their panels on and get either reduced cost of energy, or they pay us just rent to use our roof, which is what PSE and G is doing. So, that's another way to kind of offset costs to have that.
And, and real quickly, if I could just mention on sustainability, the new boilers that were put in at Bear Tavern and Timberlane are high-efficiency condensing boilers in comparison to the behemoths that were there. We will probably save one-third to one-half the amount of gas that was used prior. So, you know, they're considerably more efficient, and when we replaced them in Hopewell, again, we were, we had four steam and hot water boilers that were going to probably go to just two or three of these new condensing boilers.
We're also seeing the same thing with the window projects. We did it Hopewell, Tollgate, and actually the admin building. I think any of the folks who are working in the admin building now can say that the windows have made a big difference in the climate within that building.
Yeah. So, I hope we're keeping track of all of these things, because I think it's at the right time. It would be nice to kind of lay it all out and see both where we are and what else we can do.
Sure.
Cool. Thanks.
Any other questions? Then we'll say thank you very much to both of you for the presentation and for the efficiency that you provide in that department, and also to your staff. It's very impressive, all the certifications that everyone has and the money that that saves us over time. So, thank you again for that report.
We are very fortunate, I must say. We are fortunate to have those skilled tradesmen.
We certainly are. We appreciate that. And so now, we will move on to the presentation and special opportunity for public comment on the self-assessment of the district's implementation of the Anti-Bullying Rights Act. And Mr. DiStefano is here to join us again. We're so pleased to see you. I will...
You can sit.
Can I request the motion before he presents?
Yeah.
So, I will request a motion that, per the superintendent's recommendation, that the Board of Education approve the self-assessment of the district's implementation of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act for the '21-'22 school year, and submission of the self-assessment and the statement of assurances to the New Jersey Department of Education. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Mr. DiStefano, it's all yours.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lentouris. So, the state has put a pretty specific rubric in place to help each district self-assess its efforts in the reduction of harassment, intimidation, and bullying each year, specifically in adherence to the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Tonight, I'm here to review our district's self-assessment scores from the past school year. You'll recall that I was here last month and talked about the programming and different measures the district has put in place towards student wellness, towards the reduction of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So, the presentations kind of go hand-in-hand. This one deals more with the nuts and bolts of the adherence to the Bill of Rights and the policies, whereas last month was more about the kind of like more creative things we're doing in the district in terms of programming and working with our students in those areas. So, we'll take a look through each of the different, each of the different domains of the rubric. You'll see there's a score on a, from zero to three for each piece. Three meaning that we've exceeded expectations and requirements, two meaning met requirements, one being below, and we don't have zeros, so. We can move along to that next slide. So, you'll see, yeah, you'll see each domain. Domain one, you know, deals with our programs and different approaches and different initiatives that we're putting into place each year, and we have a mix of twos and threes in each building. You'll see each, next to each, each element, each building is then listed, and the building's specific score is identified for each, for each aspect. The second core element is regarding trainings on the, on the board-approved HIB policy here in the district. So, again, primarily threes and a two, I think, mixed in there. Core element three is the staff instruction and training programs. All staff in the state of New Jersey is required to be trained on harassment, intimidation, and bullying. You know, our teachers and all of our staff are on the front lines in identifying these, these concerns and identifying trends, and so there's extensive training put in place for everybody in the district, not just our faculty, but all of our contractors in our buildings and anybody who might be around our children during the school day. Core element four, curriculum and instruction on HIB and related information. So, we're educating our students on these, on these policies, on, on the idea of creating a respectful and welcoming school environment, which you'll see four B there focuses on the, the week of respect, which we, you know, go above and beyond in recognizing each October. Core element five, HIB personnel, so the identification of the anti-bullying specialists, anti-bullying coordinator in each building, and then the school safety teams that meet several times each year in each, in each building to, again, to discuss trends and different programming that might be put in place at the building level. Core element six, the school-level HIB reporting procedures, hand-in-hand with core element seven, the HIB investigation procedure, which, you know, the, I think the crux of all this in this report is our adherence to the Bill of Rights and, and all those reporting procedures, and I'd love to see perfect scores in that area for element seven. So, that's, that's really good to see. And then eight, eight deals with the, the reporting and the procedures to the state, which we, we report all of the instances of HIB and all of these assessment results to the state each year as well. You'll see we scored, excuse me, you'll see we scored 75 overall for the district, and each building was in that 73 to 76 area. Timberlane improved significantly from the previous year, and so our, I think the next slide shows the trends from year to year, and you'll see our scores are typically in that 74 to 75 range. So, we were, we were right there again this school year. There's a link to more information about the Bill of Rights, and then just a little overview of the different things we have in place in each building, which allow us to score so, so high in these different domains. Anti-bullying coordinator in place, anti-bullying specialists in each building in place, meetings between... meetings between all these different parties, including the District Safety Committee and the school safety teams. Campus safety officers in each building play an essential role in all of this work. Assemblies throughout the school year. We did one just a month or so ago with some of our elementary students on, you know, being safe behind the screen of their phones or their electronic devices and, and such important work in that area. Counselors working with students and parents, and then those peer leadership programs that we have in place in, in each building. Just a basic overview of kind of the, the, the people and, and the policies that we have in place in, in our buildings that allow us to adhere with the, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do board members have any questions for Mr. DiStefano? Okay, we'd like to say thank you very much for that presentation. We're glad, we're encouraged to see progress in some areas and, and, you know, to have the staff in place that we do to implement these procedures. So thank you so much. We will.
Special conversation.
We will now have a public comment, special session on this report alone. Members of the public are invited to address the board on this report in particular for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open on this particular matter. Seeing no public comment, this session is now closed. And I will ask that we vote. So all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. Thank you again, Dan. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I will now request a motion that the board approve the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, known as New Jersey CUSAC, District Performance Review as presented for submission to the New Jersey Department of Education for 2022, 2023. Motion, please. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. We will now move into our general public comment session. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. We do not have any items under old business this month, but we will move along to the consent agenda, all the items marked with an asterisk. And I will ask that the board approve the consent agenda, consent agenda items that have been marked by the asterisk. Motion, please. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. I will go to Mr. Sewicki to provide a report from the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, please.
Okay, Debbie, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Loud and clear.
Okay. All right, good. No, thanks, thanks to Bob and Tom again with regard to like overall facilities planning. I'll just add in a couple of updates from this last meeting that was held, I think, last Monday. So a couple of things we discussed, one was district internet services. We had a contract with Verizon, which expired. They chose not to extend, so we're out for a competitive bidding for that. Let's see. We went through ongoing facilities issues. One, which was somewhat interesting, dealt with a bathroom in the 400 Hall of CHS. What we learned from this is apparently we have an issue with the way some of our waterless urinals were installed in terms of like the materials and the piping afterward. So that is something we're going to have to keep a look on and, you know, potentially have to deal with. The existing water lines are there. You know, we might be potentially looking in the future at replacement of some of the urinals in our bathrooms because of this. Let's see. We talked about the state allocating some money for districts to apply for, for certain projects. So as, as Bob mentioned, we're, we're looking at a couple of projects there to submit. We also went through our quarterly report of the financial status. This is basically looking at our, our, how we're doing on our budget, looking at where our expenditures fall relative to our projections. Couple of things just to note. One is that a couple of years ago, the district went to self-insurance. For the first couple of years, we had done very well there. This year, we're starting to see some of our benefit spending trending a little bit higher. And there's two primary reasons for that. One is just the, the general costs due to inflation. And the second may just be that, oh, some people had deferred some procedures to be done past COVID. So, you know, we're starting to see more activity in terms of use of the health benefits. One other key thing, the last couple of years, we've talked about some of our challenges with transportation. The good news there is that we're fully staffed and we're having fewer issues than the past two years. We're still having challenges related to after-school and late runs. And I, I think that's the, the main thing. The other thing, we just have to note that we had a donation of a golf cart from a parent, which will be used to get students to our outdoor educational areas. So just, just the district thanking for the donation.
Thank you, Mr. Sewicki. Any questions for Adam or for Bob? I will request a motion that the board gratefully acknowledge and accept the donation of a 2022 Easy Go Express S4 Golf Cart from Jeffrey and Jeanette Heinel. Motion, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. All right, thanks again. We will move along to Ms. Grillo and the Personnel Committee report, please.
Okay, great. Can I have a motion to move the items on the personnel agenda? So the Personnel Committee met just before this meeting at 6:15. Fairly short meeting, as you can see on the agenda. We talked about personnel appointments and ECA appointments primarily. So you'll see on there, we filled some long-term leave of absence positions, some paraprofessionals. We have several media center volunteers for the elementary schools that are on for approval. And then the approval for the per diem rate for substitute nurse position, which was spoken about at last meeting, but that's for your approval tonight. And an adjustment for interns due to inflation, we're raising their rate from fourteen dollars to fourteen dollars and thirteen cents. So, Mr. Colavita, can I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Genovasi?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Resnick? Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Thorst?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving along to Education Program Committee and Ms. Driver, please.
I'm, I'm going to, oh.
Dr. Palitzas.
I'm going to do the, the review for, for Ms. Driver. So we met last week. It was a relatively short meeting. Mr. Lewin was there, the supervisor of Wellness and Social Studies, and he presented just an update on the new health and PE standards to the committee. And then we also spent some time reviewing the field trip requests. So there's no action needed.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Palitzas? All right, we will move along to Community Relations and Mr. Mason.
Yeah, we also met last week. Like normal, Dr. Therese covered in her, in her statement, pretty much what we went over. But I just reiterate a couple of things. Lots of sicknesses going around. If you're sick, stay home. I know we're kind of past the COVID. Let's not go back to where it used to be. If you're sick, stay home. It's common sense. Also, we're reviewing the, the mission statement. So if anyone gets a chance, go on, there's a survey. Take a couple of minutes, fill it out, it helps. We're, that's a good thing. And Community Relations, I want everyone to have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Take a couple of minutes and everyone think about what you're thankful for, and that's about it.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mason? I do not believe we have an SEL committee report because we didn't get to meet this month. We did meet. We were trying to remember if that was still within the month. I'm sorry about that. Ms. Tenardo will present for us.
Hi, we did have a brief meeting last week. And we discussed, Dan DiStefano, Dr. Therese and I worked together with Deb Dumont out of Comprehensive Mental Health to address a request from several parents with regard to having some type of grief support group. So Dan sent out a survey. We had close to twenty parents who responded, who have lost a spouse or a child over the last several years. And we're going to work with Deb Dumont out of Comprehensive and provide three to five sessions, probably two separate groups, grief support sessions to support, support their needs. We also talked about the fact that January 2nd, we're pushing out the Character Strong Curriculum across the district, preschool through 12th grade, although many of our staff are embracing this and utilizing it daily in their instruction. And then the third thing we discussed is Nurtured Heart is starting again. We have our first session on tomorrow night, Wednesday night. And we have twenty-seven parents and guardians who are participating at the Board of Ed Office. So I'm quite excited about that. Staff training will start Nurtured Heart in January.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Tenardo? Seeing none, we will move on to policy, and I believe we're back to Mr. Sewicki again.
Yes, excellent. Let's see, can I have a motion to move the policies and regulations up for first reading, please? Yeah, Bob, I'm sorry. We've got the one under reviewed, so I wasn't quite certain where that fell in terms of our category. Certainly the ones up for first reading are the ones we need to move. But I wasn't, I wasn't certain about the one that's under reviewed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start with the reviewed ones first.
Okay, okay. So do we need to make a, a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so let's, let's start again. So can I have a motion to move the policy that's up under reviewed? Okay. So this is Policy 2610 for Educational Program Evaluation. And it's basically an overview of the parameters in terms of the means by which the superintendent in the district shall perform evaluations. I think the main clarification is it provides an overview of the fact that we use multiple measures to monitor performance and that the board will make available to the public progress reports on how we're doing. So, so the committee reviewed this, we make a motion to approve. Bob, technically, is this one being moved for additional review? Or is it like first reading? I guess I'm a little unclear.
I think this is something that we discovered that needed to be done through our policy service. I think you're just saying is you've reviewed it and you're not needing, needing to take any further action.
Okay. Okay, so then we don't need a motion to approve for first reading?
Nope, we've, you've approved that you reviewed it. Yeah.
We just need the vote on that. So all in favor?
Very good.
Board members, all in favor? Yes? Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Back to you, Mr. Sewicki.
Okay, now, now on to the regular schedule. Okay, so can I have a motion to move the policies and regulations up for first reading, please? Okay, so what we have are Policy 2415.04, Title I District, District-wide Parent and Family Engagement. Again, that covers how we interact with parents as part of our Title I program. We also have Policy and Regulation 2425 related to emergency virtual or remote instruction program. This replaces what we had in terms of our COVID-19 protocols. The key thing here is that it's basically a means by which in the event our state or local health departments recommend that it's advisable to close schools or we can implement a closure for more than three consecutive school days. After that, the superintendent has the authority to implement our virtual or remote instruction program. And the next is Regulation 8420.1 for fire drills, which we revised. And the last one is Policy 2210, Curriculum Development. And, and I will say, you know, some of the, in what was posted, we get our policies from our policy service. And you can see that within Policy Committee, we make a fair number of edits. Some basically related to preferred district terminology, adding things like parents and caregivers. But other, some of the other ones, for example, in the curriculum development, we, we changed it to best clarified roles of the superintendent and also acknowledging that our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction is also responsible for that. So at this point, our committee has reviewed them and are recommending these be approved for first reading.
So I believe it's an all in favor at this point? No?
All in favor?
All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.
Okay, can I have a motion to, to move the policies and regulation up for second reading, please?
Motion, please? You can proceed, Mr. Sewicki.
Okay, great, okay. Here we have those that we approved for first reading last month. They include Policy 5722 for student journalism, Policy 5512 harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And then Policy and Regulation 2200 for curriculum content. These are, these have not changed since what we approved for first reading last month. The one thing I will say is based upon public comment, a, a public comment last month, we did review the discussion in curriculum content as well as harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We coordinated it with our policy service as well as our district attorney. And we did determine that the language in there is acceptable in terms of being sufficiently inclusive to carry other, all the characteristics that we were, we were looking to cover there. There had been some question about gender, et cetera, gender identity. So we made sure that it was appropriate in terms of the legal requirements, in terms of all the district, all the different characteristics we wanted to cover. So, so we did do that, thanks. And again, you know, again, it's good, good feedback from the public. We made sure that what we had was appropriate. So at this point, we're recommending, oh, I'm sorry?
No, you're good, sorry. There was just a strange sound there.
Oh, no problem. Okay, so, so at this point, we're recommending approval of these items up for second reading. So this would be a roll call.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Genovasi?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Thorst?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sewicki. For navigating that, so. Thank you, Mr. Sewicki, for navigating that so wonderfully over the internet. We appreciate your use of parliamentary procedure there. Very nice. Okay. Review of board calendars for December. We will start with-
Motion.
I'm sorry, I will request a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
All right. We will begin with Finance and Facilities, please.
I'm going to request that I poll my members since Bill isn't here for a meeting. You know, we'll schedule it offline.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Personnel will be at 6:15 on December 12th. Education Program Committee, and we typically do that along with Community Relations. Do we want to do Community Relations at our, or do we want to do that the following week? Do we have a Hopewell Express coming up?
They can have one coming up, and they have a layout for it already.
Okay.
So it's up to you all. I can do it on the 30th.
Let's do that, then. Let's do that. SEL.
Wait, you're going to Communications before or after?
After.
Five o'clock for Community Relations.
Sorry about that.
Could SEL be Wednesday, December 7th at 10:00 a.m.?
What time?
10:00 a.m.
10:00.
I guess we'll need to confirm with Anita, but, yeah, I think-
Yeah, I'll send an invite and just see. I'm going to be out of town the next day, so that wouldn't work for me either.
Thank you. Yep. We'll do that. Policy.
Now, for Policy, we usually have it on the Friday, but December 2nd, so we have time to, you know, contact the district lawyer if we need to, the board attorney. Could we do the Thursday, though, because I have a roundtable that day?
So Thursday, December 1st, we're looking at.
No. Yeah, no, we could do it. That works. I will. That's different. I haven't-
Does that date work for you, Adam?
What was, December 1st?
December 1st.
That's fine. What was, yeah, what was the, what was the time?
It's up to you. I have another meeting at 10:00 p.m., but not before that.
Seven thirty or eight would be fine with me.
Eight o'clock on the first.
Okay, we're all good. All right. All in favor of approving the calendar?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Any items of new business to bring before the board? Seeing none, we will move to our second general public comment session. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open. Seeing no participants, we will now close this session of public comment. The board will now enter into executive session. I'll request a motion that we do so to discuss matters of harassment, intimidation, and bullying and an employee matter. No action will be taken. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.